There, now we're cooking. Okay, again, it's August 29th. This is a meeting of the Board of Referred Powers. I'd like to go to the clerk and have you explain the reason why this committee has been convened.
The Board of Refered Powers is meeting to consider the unfair employment relations practices claimed 1934 through 1941 alleging that the city violated Section 4.860 of the Los Angeles Administrative Code specifically regarding the employment process for Employee Relations Board. The city attorney's office has opined that the Employment Relations Board is disqualified from considering the matter concerning unfair employment labor relations claims 1934 through 1941, and those matters are transferred to the Board of Refered Powers.
Okay, at this point, I'd like to defer to our city attorney, Deion.
Thank you. The first part of my statement is based on the city attorney's opinion dated June 9, 2004, and then I will directly address the correspondence received the other day. City Charter, Section 222, requires the city attorney to render a written opinion at the request of a board member, the board itself, or an elected city official concerning whether a city board or any of its members are disqualified by state law from acting on a particular matter, or whether it would be contrary to the public interest for the member or board to act. Upon the city attorney's conclusion that a conflict exists among a quorum of members, or that state law makes it unlawful for the board to act, the matter is transferred to the Board of Refered Powers for appropriate action. The Board of Refered Powers is vested with the same power to act on the transferred matter as the originating board, and its actions have the same force and effect as would the actions of the originating board. Specifically in this matter, state law precludes the two recently appointed ERB members from considering the unions' claims under state law because the claims seek, among other things, to remove those members. Therefore, any decision on the merit of these claims will necessarily affect the compensation those members receive. Additionally, all five ERB members, the two recently appointed ERB members, and the other three members also are disqualified under Charter, Section 222, i.e., not in the public interest standard, for the separate reason that a member of the public would reasonably conclude that they could not objectively consider claims involving the member's own appointment process. Pursuant to the government code, recusal is required if a decision would have a reasonably foreseeable impact on the public official's personal finances by $250 or more in a 12-month time period. Therefore, state law requires the recusal of the two recently appointed ERB members. The very manner in which all the ERB members are appointed is the subject of a pending unfair employment labor practice claim. Because the ERB members would be tasked with considering claims relating to their own appointment process, a member of the public could reasonably conclude that none of the ERB members would be objective in considering the claims. Now to address the correspondence received the other day. The Board of Refered Powers has received correspondence claiming that the board has a conflict because the board members, in their capacity as council members, acted to confirm the appointments of the Employee Relations Board members. The city attorney's office has determined that there is no such conflict. The city council's authority to confirm appointments to the city's various commissions is not an issue in this matter, nor has it ever been. The conflict in this matter concerns the direct personal and financial interests to the ERB members associated with their service. This interest would not apply to council members acting as members of this board. The Board of Refered Powers was created by Charter, Section 222, effective in the year 2000. The language of Charter, Section 222, is primarily the same as language in the previous version of the charter, specifically Charter Sections 28 and 28.1. Charter, Section 502, provides that mayoral appointments are subject to the approval of council. Nearly all of the meetings of the Board of Refered Powers over the past 15 years, for example, have concerned the board sitting in place of several of the city's many boards and commissions, including the Board of Water and Power Commissioners, the Board of Airport Commissioners, the Board of Harbor Commissioners, the Board of Recreation and Parks Commissioners, and the City Ethics Commission. Each of the commissioners in those matters who were declared to have been in conflict were confirmed by the city council. The Board of Refered Powers did not have a conflict of interest in those matters, and this Board of Refered Powers does not have a conflict in this matter.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney, and I'm joined here today by Mr. Cucuri and Fuentes. We are an Englander. I think the appropriate way for us to move forward would to hear from both sides, and I say we start this off with 15 minutes on either side. We're also joined by Mr. Bergerson, the executive director of the ERB, who will be here to take questions or what have you. So why don't we start out with the legal counsel for the unions? Is it Lester you want to be first or second? So you must be Mr...
My name is Anthony Siegel of Ostroff Siegel &amp; Greenstone. Our firm represents the Coalition of City Unions. I don't know that I'm going to take my 15 minutes. Let me say two things. One, we sent the letter yesterday concerning the conflict...
Well, it's not that I gave you 15, and we're going to have this so you can...
I won't take all of our time, and Mr. Ostrov can speak. We sent the letter yesterday to give the city an opportunity to consider the disqualification issue. We assume that the city attorney will at some point issue a written decision, as it did with respect to the issue of the disqualification of the sitting ERB members. We heard the abbreviated oral version here, and based on that, I think there's a distinction, but of course, I'm not in a position to say definitively whether their decision, opinion is right or wrong. The distinction is this: unlike the normal situation where the Board of Refered Powers hears issues by where members of a committee have been disqualified, here the legal dispute is about past appointments actually made by members of the board. What happened here, and it set forth in the letter that I sent you yesterday, is there was a new procedure implemented. Under the new procedure, there were two appointments made. The city council, acting in its capacity of approving the mayor's appointments of those members, actually acted on those appointments. The unfair labor practice charge that the unions have filed seeks, among other things, a rescission of those appointments made and voted upon by the city council members, and I think that's different from the normal situation in which the committee on referred powers generally finds itself. I think that's an important distinction. Now presumably, at some point, we'll get a more detailed city attorney's opinion about that. We don't think, based on those disqualification principles, that this committee can act. If the committee is going to accept the oral opinion, or if there's a written opinion that we haven't seen yet, and exercise its authority to process the underlying ERB charges, I don't want to get into the merits of those charges, but we would agree that if those charges are going to go forward, the appropriate step is to refer them to a hearing, a factual quasi-judicial hearing. Our problem is that what Mr. Bergerson, I think he ably grappled with the issues here, he recommended, "Send it to a hearing officer to hear these issues." That may be a fine approach. Our concern would be, once you have a decision of a hearing officer, that decision normally is not binding. Normally, it goes back to the ERB. My question would be, would the decision of the hearing officer, under these sort of extemporized rules, come back to this body? I'm assuming the decision of the hearing officer wouldn't be final, and it would have to come back to some body. If it comes back to this body, that then puts this body in the position of having legally to determine the validity of appointments that this body made, and we think the conflict... You can put the issue off by sending it off to a hearing, but eventually, the decision is going to come back here, and the disqualification issue is going to arise again. I would answer any questions that the committee has.
If you would just stick around for...
Oh, I'm not going anywhere.
...a few minutes, just in case there are some questions.
My name is Lester Ostrov. I'm an attorney for...
Hey, Lester, could you pull the...
And I'm short. My name is Lester Ostrov, and I'm an attorney for United Firefighters, UFLAC, which is one of the charging parties in these consolidated cases. I join in Mr. Siegel's comments and agree with the positions he has stated. I do want to add one thing. This case, these cases, while they may appear to you to involve simply one mayor a number of years ago issuing a directive, and then a new mayor rescinding that directive, these cases involve a lot more than that. They involve a history, a long history, beginning with the enactment of the Employee Relations Ordinance and continuing up until the time of Mayor Garcetti's directive. And that history, unfortunately, I've been around throughout that time period. I've represented the firefighters since the inception of the Employee Relations Ordinance, and indeed, at that time, I represented the County Federation of Labor as well. So I've become an historian because everyone else has died since then. But this practice that we're dealing with has been in existence since the beginning of the Employee Relations Ordinance, and it worked, to my knowledge, it worked without a problem during that entire time. There was common union management agreement on who should be appointed, or at least a list of who should be appointed, and then the mayor appointed from that list, and it worked very well. In the very early days, I was directly involved in that process because, as I said, I represented the County Federation of Labor, and in those days, it was the CAO's office dealing with Bill Robertson and Jim Wood before they named streets after them, and it all worked smoothly. And as far as I know, it continued to work smoothly until Mayor Garcetti suddenly had the urge to change it. I tell you this history because my understanding is some of this, and I wasn't there, but my understanding is that some of this was discussed at council when these appointments were made, or were approved, rather. And that history is the gravamen of this case. And in terms of the conflict issue, with all due respect, the council has already looked at this policy, and has already looked at these appointments, and has voted on them. And now, those of you that are members of this committee, are sitting here revisiting it in a context of a quasi-judicial proceeding, and that's why we are concerned about the conflict. And with that, I will leave whatever time is left. Thank you.
Thank you. I think now what we'll do now, we'll ask our city attorneys, if you could reset the clock, we'll have our city attorneys come forward. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Joanna Sparquist. I'm the deputy city attorney representing the city in this matter. We're fully satisfied with the opinion you've already received with regard to your authority to act in this matter. We think that the charter is clear, and we should go forward. It's the city's position that this case should be dismissed, and the case should be dismissed right now here by you, acting in lieu of the ERB. But just as the ERB dismisses cases which are not properly or do not properly set forth allegations of unfair labor practices, you are embodied and authorized to dismiss this because this case, again, does not set forth allegations of an unfair labor practice. And the reasons for that are clear. Putting aside our timeliness argument, which is a factual issue, which if you send this to a hearing, is an issue which will be flushed out at the hearing level. What you have not heard, you've just heard Mr. Ostrov tell you all about the history and this practice which has been going on for so long. What you've not heard from him is that this is a practice over which the city has ever met and conferred over. Yes, there is a practice, but not all practices rise to the level of terms and conditions of employment, and not all practices have to be met and conferred over. The city has quite a few avenues of endeavor in which it does not have to meet and confer, and indeed, this is one of them. And as you yourselves all know, the city does not meet and confer over many issues, including appointments to commissions. The ERB is no different in legal stature from the many other commissions that this board votes, that the city council votes on appointments to: the Civil Service Commission, the Pension Boards, Board of Public Works. There are any number of commissions that are authorized by our charter and for which the city council approves or disapproves of the mayor's appointments. The mayor has the authority under the charter, under the law of California, to make these appointments, and indeed, he does so. And then you, in your role as city council, you approve or disapprove of those appointments. The same for the ERB. There really is no difference here. What you've heard from the claimants here is that, well, we had this practice that they think was working very well. Regardless of their opinion on it, it was a practice which was unilaterally established by a prior mayor pursuant to his authority to issue executive directives, and those executive directives do not necessarily bind perpetuity in suing mayors. Future mayors have the authority to withdraw, to revise, to reissue, and to issue their own executive directives, which is all we have here: a subsequent mayor acting pursuant to his authority under the charter to issue a new executive directive. So, and I think that the fact that there is no evidence, and no likely, there is no evidence brought to your attention that the issuance of the past executive directive was met and conferred over, and my understanding is it was not, that the fact that it is unilaterally withdrawn and a new one implemented shows exactly why there is no violation of law in doing so. I would also like to bring up the issue of, I mean, the city has the authority to act by itself without meeting and conferring over a host of issues. There is also no, over a host of issues, there's no... It seems to me it sets a dangerous precedent for the city council to say, "Well, maybe you have to meet and confer over appointments to the Employee Relations Board," when the legal structure is no different from that of other boards. You raise the question, "Will we start meeting and conferring over other boards as well?" One wouldn't want to set that as a precedent. So the city sees that the appointments to this board are part of the mayor's fundamental managerial authority, just as he has authority to manage all the rest of the city's departments, and that there are no facts showing that appointments to the ERB are within the terms and conditions of employment, and therefore, there's no legal foundation for meeting and conferring on this. There is no historic practice of meeting and conferring over this executive directive, and that the mayor was entirely within his authority to withdraw this executive directive. I've used up half my time. Are there other things you would like me to address?
You want to use the other eight minutes and 32 seconds?
Excuse me?
I said you have another eight minutes. We're dying to see how you use that.
Well, I'm not here to just bore you, but I think that...
You're not.
The city's position has been set out in the city's response, which was filed some months ago, and indeed, all of the failures of the claimants to have any factual predicate for the basis for their claim, other than, gee, we've done it this way forever, was pointed out in our papers, and here today, you've heard no facts and no suggestion that any of the statements in the city's response are inaccurate. So we think it behooves you to dismiss this case.
Thank you. And if you could stick around for a bit...
I'm certainly going to be here, yes.
Okay, Mr. -- where did he go? Mr. Bergerson, you're still... oh, there you are. Did you want to say something before the members get engaged?
With the Employee Relations Board is, during meetings, to strictly ask questions about procedure, the board's case law, and things of that nature. So I will perform the same question here for this board.
Okay. Thank you, and again, thank you for coming.
Excuse me, I don't know if you will hear a response. I think we have some time left.
A little louder.
I don't know if you will hear a response to the city attorney's statements. I know we have some time left of our 15 minutes.
No, I just, at this point, I want to try to take the temperatures of the members that are here, so why don't you afford us an opportunity to kind of talk about maybe some of the things that you and Mr. Siegel had suggested, and then we'll consider what was stated to us by the city attorney as well.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So, members, as we proceed, there are two paths that I see, and I'm going to ask you guys to jump in, but there are two directions that I can see us going in today, either one I know I would be comfortable with. One of which would be to direct this to a hearing officer, where they could maybe give us a little more info where it relates to the legal concerns. The other path today would be for us to have a conversation and then continue this item until, because there are things that are going on in Sacramento that could have a direct effect on what we do. So I'd like, I think we could go either way, but with that said, I'm really curious to see what your thoughts are, and I know Mr. Fuentes, maybe if you could kind of drill down a little bit on the hearing officer concern and what happens afterwards. I know you and I had a... so I'd like to defer to you first, if I could.
Well, this is nerve-wracking, because I don't mean to play attorney here when I'm sitting with so many of them, and obviously, my colleague, Mr. Cucuri, and but I think what's important, and Mr. Weezer, my apologies, Mr. Weezer, I'm surrounded. I think the concern that, well, I shouldn't say concern, I've got a lot of concerns, but the question that I have initially is, I think it was testified to a second ago by the city attorney's office, and I think equally by the charging parties, that if we were to defer this action, or rather, seek the recommendation of a hearing officer, would it then be a decision that would have to be ratified by this body?
Are you asking?
I'm asking the city attorney.
Okay. The normal procedure at the ERB is for, when they decide that there is reason to send a case to a hearing officer, they send it to a hearing officer, the hearing officer makes essentially findings of fact and conclusions of law, but those are recommendations to the ERB. It then goes back to the ERB after the hearing officer has written his or her opinion, and then the ERB votes to sustain, modify, or change, or not accept. Sometimes, when the board feels that the hearing officer has not addressed the issues that are of concern to the ERB itself, they will then send it back to the hearing officer for revisions, more information, a different report. But yes, ultimately, it comes back to the ERB to make the final decision, and it is, in fact, the ERB's decision. It's not ultimately the hearing officer's decision.
Very good. That's helpful to me, colleagues. I do have, Mr. Chair, some questions, and if I could ask the city attorney to stay up here for a little bit. So if you could help me understand precisely what the process was, I know that, I don't know when the ERO came into play, but it seems like it was 1971, ratified by two mayors thereafter. What was the process for the appointment to the ERB by the executive officer, or rather, the mayor?
My understanding of how it worked was that, under the ERO as it existed originally, there was this process for setting up a committee between the CAO and the unions, and the unions designated some person to be their liaison to this committee. So there was basically one person from the union and someone from the CAO's office, and they put together a list of three names, and these three names were given to the mayor, and the mayor selected one of these three people. Then in 1999, we had the new charter, as you know, and the new charter changed the legal basis of the ERB, making it exactly the same as all the other commissions. And in response to that, city council amended the Employee Relations Ordinance to eliminate the provision which said what I just explained to you, and so that provision was taken out. Thereafter, Mayor Riordan unilaterally decided to issue the executive directive at issue here today, and reinstituted that process of a committee of the unions, one representative of the unions and someone from the CAO's office to meet, come together with a list, and give a list of three names to the mayor. He did that by executive directive rather than by ordinance, apparently. I mean, it appears that he decided to forego his authority under the new charter and do it in this fashion.
Mayor Han followed suit, issued the same executive directive?
No, it was not reissued, it was just continued in implementation. It was never rescinded until Mayor Garcetti did so.
And the, an element of that sort of process... And the -- an element of that sort of process prior to Mayor Garcetti's sort of rescinding of that executive order is that you had to have a qualified neutral. Is that correct, in terms of sort of who made it onto that list?
Well, it doesn't -- the Employee Relations Ordinance has language in the ordinance establishing criteria for who may be on the ERB. And that criteria has never -- that statutory criteria has never changed. The criteria itself does not say that the person who is -- the people who go onto this list, or the people who get appointed to the ERB must be arbitrators. The practice has been that, prior to Mayor Garcetti, the practice was that the people who selected appeared to have been primarily arbitrators, or arbitrators, law professors, or mediators. But there were people who had professional responsibilities in that way. The statute does not mandate that.
Understood. I'm just sort of trying to understand what the pattern and practice prior to Mayor Garcetti.
Right.
And presumably, a mayor prior to Eric Garcetti could have then not accepted anybody on that list, asked his CAO to sort of push for whatever appointments are, thereby sort of helping sort of shape the conversation, but had essentially the ability to accept or deny members of that list. I mean, presumably, that was sort of within that sort of framework before.
Presumably, the mayor could have said, "I don't like this list. Get me another one."
Gotcha.
Right.
And the other question that I've gotten, and I've got a comment, Mr. Chair, if that's okay, several comments, is can you help me understand the distinction between -- the legal distinction between "meet and confer" and "meet and consult"?
Sure.
It seems to me that that is a question that is sort of raised by Mr. Bergerson's sort of report to us.
Yes. Yes, I believe it is. Meet and confer is the process by which you all are familiar with negotiations coming to an MOU. You've all -- you're familiar with the process where the city sits down with an individual union. They go over the terms of a proposed MOU for the future, and you go back and forth, back and forth, and eventually, hopefully, come to a resolution. If you don't come to a resolution, we then go through impasse procedures and over matters which are terms and conditions of employment. You don't go to impasse over things which are not terms and conditions of employment. So, as you may know, an MOU, all of our MOUs here at the city, have thing -- talk about lots and lots and lots of matters. Not necessarily all of them are required to be met and conferred over. So, if you come to impasse over a new MOU, you would not necessarily go to impasse over every detail in the MOU. That's why, at the end of an impasse procedure, when the city imposes terms and conditions of employment, you don't necessarily have everything in there. Meet and consult, on the other hand, is where the city gets to exercise its managerial responsibilities over a range of different things, but it sits down and talks to the unions and gets their input. So, that the management says to the union, "You know, we're moving forward on this, but we'd like to know what you think about it. We're not meeting and conferring, but we do want to have your input." So, you sit down, you talk, you listen, and then move on. You might, you know, change your position because of what you've heard from the union, but you might not, and the law does not require you to go to impasse over this.
Very good. Thank you very much. So, colleagues, I've got a couple of observations here on this issue, as the lone dissenting voice on the council on the first appointment and absent for the second appointment. Let me just say, from a policy perspective, this is incredibly frustrating, because irrespective of what we do here, there is a bill in the legislature, Assembly Bill 1881, that is making its way to the governor's desk, if it's not already on the governor's desk, that would make all of this potentially moot, in that it would say that you would have to have qualified neutrals, et cetera, sort of benched on employee relations boards. So, understanding that our work here may be invalidated by some legislative action in the future, and in my opinion, understanding that this could simply have been avoided, had the pattern and practice that worked for 43 years been maintained by the mayor's office, understanding that they had the veto power to be able to say, "We don't like anybody on this list. Bring me another one." It just seems like it's an incredible -- our time could be used in other ways. That being said, the understanding that there is a question of material fact as to whether the charging parties were able to sort of get in, lodge their concerns in time, I think, is important, and probably in the domain of a hearing officer to understand, because I don't think that we're equipped to do that analysis. But I think adding to all of that, the fact that there is a distinction here as to whether the city of Los Angeles should have met and conferred, or met and consulted, I think is also a matter of fact that we may need some additional opinion from a hearing officer. But for me, again, you know, this is a tremendous amount of time that we're going to have to -- and resources, money, that we're going to have to invest on something that I think is really important to all of us, is to maintain the ability to work with our rank-and-file, our labor partners, in a way that is collaborative. I would politely disagree with the city attorney's office with the following respect. While legally structured, this commission may not be different from other ones, the role that it plays in maintaining our ability to work with our labor partners, to me, sort of rises to a more significant policy level, for me at least, to be able to maintain a collaborative working sort of arrangement. So, while it may be different, rather, legally, it may be the same as the airport commission or anything else, the fact that the Employee Relations Board adjudicates unfair labor practices makes it so that I would want to spend a little bit more time at the outset to try to figure out a way that we would agree, at least, to those folks who sit in that adjudication sort of seat. My policy opinion, probably not in line with the legal opinion. So, for those reasons, Mr. Chair, I just don't see another way out, other than sort of asking a hearing officer to help us resolve some of these issues. But again, the sort of policy frustration here is that all of this may be rendered moot, and certainly could have been avoided.
Mr. Kukorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to start with some process questions before we get to substance, because I'm not yet entirely clear on what the limitations of the authority of this board are. We've kind of operated under the assumption that any question of fact needs to be referred to a hearing officer, a disputed question of fact, and that this body's role is essentially as the quasi-judicial trier of law, and that if there's a disputed question of fact, that would need to be referred. First of all, is that true? And second, what's the basis for that? And I ask both the city attorney and the executive director.
I would defer to Mr. Bergerson as to how the process works in ERB, since this body is sitting in the place of the ERB.
Abely, I believe, articulated earlier how the process works, that our hearing officer decisions are, by definition, advisory to the board.
Sorry. Let me restate the question. May this board adjudicate questions of fact, or must questions of fact be referred to a hearing officer and then reported back here?
The ERB has authority to adjudicate questions of fact itself. It, for at least a quarter century, has not done so. The process has been to refer those to a hearing officer.
Okay. And then, the resolution of those questions of fact would come back here for application of the law and validation of the findings on the fact, I assume?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, I think we need to speak a bit to the issue of conflict that was raised just yesterday? Because the first time I saw that letter was when I walked in here this morning. So, it was raised yesterday. I appreciate the city attorney's rapid response to that and the citation of other precedents with other commissions. I can see a differentiation in this case because of the fact that the council actually voted on, essentially voted to validate the process by which these appointments were made, which is being questioned today. I think that's arguably a distinction between validating the actions of commissioners that we have confirmed. So, I just raised that as a -- and as council did, as a potential distinction, which, given the fact that you didn't have very much time to resolve that, we probably haven't fleshed out, but I would feel more comfortable if we would. I think that merits a little bit further review. So, that being said, if we were to move forward with any action today, and it were determined later that there is a conflict that this board has by virtue of the fact that we are council members who voted on this issue, what would then be the implication on any actions taken today?
That's a good question. We could more fully develop our research on whether there actually is a conflict, and at that point, we could determine -- if there actually is a conflict, we could determine who would be resolving the hearing officer's findings of fact and conclusions of law. But again, I appreciate your mentioning of the distinction, although during the council consideration of this matter, there was a discussion, and there was a -- the council performed its role, but it was a limited role in confirming which is the mayor's appointment. And the council is not appointing these commissioners. Council only approved their appointment.
Right. And I can make the argument on the other side, too, that merely changing our minds after looking at further evidence doesn't -- or reconsidering a matter that we have previously considered does not typically give rise to a conflict. Judges reconsider previous decisions all the time. There's no conflict arisen by the fact that they have previously considered the matter. So, all I'm saying is that it may merit a deeper inquiry. That being said, if, for example, we were to appoint a hearing officer for consideration of the factual questions, further analysis could be done during that interim period if it were found that even that action constituted a conflict. Presumably, it would be invalidated in the same way that it would be invalidated if we chose not to proceed today. So, there would be no real change in the position of the city. So, I think I would be comfortable in our moving forward, knowing that a decision would still have to come back here. That affords additional time to consider the conflict questions and a resolution that might be had as a result of that. Mr. Fuentes covered some of my questions very well. I did want to clarify one point, though, that I think was misstated by the city attorney. If I could ask you to come up, come on up. Mr. Fuentes asked you the question about the mayor's ability to simply reject the list that was provided under the Reardon order. In fact, as I read the Reardon order, that is not the case. The mayor's only role there would be to refuse to appoint, in which case, the council president would appoint the nominee. That is, I think, pretty clearly stated in that.
Maybe correct, council member.
So, the mayor doesn't have the ability to say, "Go give me some more nominees."
I'm not aware of the mayor ever rejecting a list.
And in practice, that might be the case.
Right.
But I think Mr. Fuentes is -- yes?
Have you heard on that? There actually has been one. I've been the executive director for 14 years, and there was one instance where the mayor didn't act, didn't send the list of names to the council on a timely basis. And I recall talking to, it might have been Councilmember Fuentes now, if he worked for Council President Padilla. But Council President Padilla, therefore, had the authority to make a recommendation to the council, and he recommended one of the three names that the CAO and that the unions agreed to.
Yeah. So, the mayor doesn't have that sort of give and take. It's, "Here's the list. You either take them, or you pass, and the council--
That may be.
-- then council president goes ahead and decides. Jeez. I'm telling you. Yes, it's a good thing it's jobs. Okay. So, I want to ask next about the statute of limitations, because that's one of the issues that where there apparently is some factual dispute, and that factual dispute, I think, was recommended, should appropriately be resolved by the hearing officer. Does the time for filing the claim commence with an expression of intent to take an action, or the actual taking of an action?
It's not -- it's neither one of those. It's not intent to take. It's when the employer says, "We are going to do this."
Okay.
So, it's not just, "I'm thinking about it." It's, "I am doing it now." Or, "I'm doing it on a date."
So, in this case, it would have commenced on the date of Mayor Garcetti's rescission of the prior technical--
No, I think that's wrong. It would -- the date commences when the unions were told it was going to happen. And I believe there will be -- there was a meeting between Mr. Llewellyn and some of the union members, at which point, he told them this was going to happen.
But doesn't that contradict what I just asked? Because that's an expression of intent to take an action. That's not taking--
Well, okay, it depends what you mean by expression of intent. If you mean, "I intend to do it"-- if it's a firm intent, yes, that's it. If it's, "I'm thinking about it, and what do you think?", that's probably insufficient. But it's when the employer says, "This is what I will be doing."
I don't know who to direct this to, but Mr. Fuentes correctly pointed to the legislation that's currently making its way through the legislature. Does anyone -- is anyone here able to comment on whether AB 1881 would have retroactive effect, and so, therefore, would invalidate this action?
My understanding is it does not.
Okay. So, it might impact the future course of conduct, and therefore, shape whatever remedy might be taken here, but it would not, in itself, invalidate the prior action of the mayor in this case?
That's my understanding.
Okay. Can I ask Representative of Labor to come up, please? Counsel for the claimants. So, in this case, there was a clear and long-term custom and practice of engaging in a particular selection process. I'd like to know what your position is on when a custom and practice becomes enforceable to the point that it requires meeting and confering. How long must it be a custom and practice, and what must the nature of the custom and practice be before it requires meeting and confer?
Well, that sometimes involves factual issues. Under sort of standard labor relations doctrine, a custom and practice, when it's repeated and established, is enforceable, as if it were a term of the contract, and it's enforceable statutorily by the fact that management can't change it without meeting and conferring. I think it's important to understand here, you know, and there were a number of things, I will state for the record, there were a number of things that Ms. Barquist said that we don't agree with. One of them is that the prior mayoral directive was not the product of a meet and confer process.
My next question.
It was.
Okay.
There was meeting and conferring. It was not the unilateral implementation of a policy by Mayor Reardon. If we ever went to hearing on that, there are people in this room who would be called as witnesses to testify about that meet and confer process.
Okay. So, since there was a meet and confer process to arrive at the Reardon executive order, if Mayor Reardon-- order, if Mayor Riordan had changed his mind two weeks later and decided to rescind it himself, would it be your position that because that was a product of meeting and conferring, that he would not be able to take that action unilaterally?
Yes, that would be our position.
Okay. Does that position depend at all on the existence of the prior procedure that was established under the ERO?
The historical context in which those discussions in 2000 and Mayor Riordan's actions took had everything to do with the fact that it had previously been in the charter and was deleted, and there were contentions. I wasn't involved, but my understanding is there were contentions at the time that the deletion from the charter had really been a mistake. And as a result, the parties met and conferred and reached a negotiated solution for what the process would be going forward.
Okay. And then finally, is, it wasn't clear to me from reading the claims. Do any of the claimants contend that the appointees did not meet the minimum requirements under the ERO? Or is this challenge to the contrary limited to the selection process?
I'd actually have to go back and look at the claims which were drafted by one of my law partners. Clearly, the thrust of the claims is the process and the unilateral change in the process, and that's alleged as a violation of the ERO. I don't think the claims allege that any of the two appointments didn't meet the statutory requirements, but don't hold me to that.
Okay. If it were determined that the obligation here was not to meet and confer, but to meet and consult, would you agree or not agree that, giving prior notice in a conversation that counsel mentioned that Mr. Llewellyn apparently had before rescission of the executive order, would that notification and allowance of time for further discussion, would that satisfy a meet and consult requirement as opposed to meet and confer?
No, we don't believe that either meeting and conferring or meeting and consulting took place and that under either standard, there's a violation and an unlawful unilateral implementation here. I commend to you Mr. Bergerson's discussion of the somewhat murky state law on the distinction under Myers- Millius Brown between meet and confer, meet and consult, something that union lawyers like me have been scratching our heads over for years.
Right. Well, certainly, meet and consult is a lesser standard. So what would be required to meet that standard as opposed to what happened?
Well, first, there has to be a process. And unlike what Ms. Barquist said, it's not simply a voluntary process. She sort of conflated the willingness to discuss issues that are outside the scope of representation, which the parties are free to do and frequently do do, but where there's no statutory requirement. Meet and consult is a statutory requirement, there has to be a process. It didn't take place here. You know, Mr. Bergerson raises this interesting, apparently open question under California law of what the remedy is for a meet and consult violation, whether you can get rescission of the action. You know, I think he's probably right that there's not a clear answer to that. That's one of the reasons why this unfortunately turns out to be a legally complex issue.
Very good, and factually complex. And I think, you know, for that reason, Mr. President, I want to wait and hear what my colleagues have to say before we take any action, obviously. But it seems to me that, while we certainly could continue the matter and have further consideration of the conflict issue and so on, in my view, appointing a hearing officer allows us the same process of, it allows us the same degree of time to allow further analysis. Doesn't put us in any different position than we would be otherwise, since that would have to be reported back at any event. And a hearing officer would probably be far better suited to be able to resolve some of the factual and legal murky questions here that have just been referenced. I think that seems to be a better course than acting today to deny the claim, certainly.
Thank you, and you can be seated, Mr.--
Now, I just make one more comment, which is, I think it's really important that the committee not lose sight of the conflict of interest disqualification issue. You know, if there's going to be an action to refer to a hearing officer, is an action taken?
Well, so if I'm not clear on that, let me just make the motion, then, that we ask the city attorney to specifically reconsider that matter, given what we've discussed today, and report it back to this committee before a report comes back from a hearing officer.
Mr., our city attorney?
Pursuant to Charter Section 222, I would interpret that as a request to our office to issue an opinion regarding the conflict of interest issue. And pursuant to the charter, it's required, since it's made by a council member acting in the order for powers, it's required to be a written opinion within 10 days.
Okay. And Mr. Segal, if you could afford me the opportunity to let the other two members of the committee speak what's on their mind and still be available to come up for questions, we'd appreciate that. Mr. Weezer?
Thank you, I just have two quick questions. And if we determined here that the hearing officer will examine questions of fact and then refer back to this committee to then look at both questions of fact and question of law, I'm just wondering, what would we send, what questions of fact will we send to the hearing officer? It seems like these are mostly legal questions and not a process, so I'm not quite sure what benefit we would get by sending it to the hearing officer. I'm just putting that out there because I'm trying to, as I'm listening to everybody, trying to figure out if the hearing officer will only look at questions of fact, what facts are in dispute that would need some clarification on.
Well, assuming that question is directed to me, I would say that, under circumstances like this, the ERB would refer to a hearing officer not only those questions of fact for the conduct of a hearing, but also to accept legal briefs on the legal questions as well and opine on both.
So they do, the hearing officer would also look at the legal issues?
Yep.
Okay, okay, that, so if that's the case, okay, that helps clarify some things for me. My other question is, I don't understand Sacramento, we have three, we ever, let's stay legislative, no. Where are we in that process? And if we do defer any action in this committee, how quickly will, or it's also, I mean, it might be difficult to ascertain how quickly the process actually happens up there.
The only thing that I could say, and Mr. Kocorian and Mr. Fuentes could correct me if I'm wrong, I believe, beginning this Sunday, the governor would have 30 days from that moment to sign or veto legislation. So that's the time period that you're looking at where it relates to the governor.
Thank you. And if we were to send this to the hearing officer, I think we should combine that with some very specific requests as to what questions of fact we're looking at and what legal advice we're looking from the officer. And the conflict issue is obviously one, but if we make that motion today, I think we should get much more specific. And if we wait until Sacramento or some state legislation, I'm not quite sure if that will take care of all the issues we're looking at, or it's just, it's going to be a part, a resolution for some issues, but not a complete resolution to all of this. And we should just keep that in mind if we go in that direction. Thanks.
Okay, Mr. Englander.
I think most of the questions have been asked, but I think it opens up an interesting dilemma in terms of what comes first in terms of a hearing officer. So if we, first, if somebody can walk me through that process and the length of time and exactly what we expect out of having that with a hearing officer. And how, what it's on.
Well, initially, I would say that, except under extraordinary circumstances, which I don't recall having existed during my time working for the ERB, we wouldn't get a hearing officer decision within 30 days.
Okay, and so assuming it goes beyond that time, and what is the process? So appointing a hearing officer, who is that neutral third hearing officer? How do we, walk me through that process as well.
After the members of the ERB determine to refer a matter to a hearing officer, then the chairman of the board selects the hearing officer from a panel of approved hearing officers that we have, which I believe is now 15 in number. And I let the chairman know about availability and the background of those type of people to educate him on making that decision.
And is that a selection process, a meet and consult or a meet and confer?
No.
And I assume if that went in that direction, that wouldn't be challenged or it would?
Well, I would point out that we've gone through rulemaking a couple times since I've been there, and there has been advocacy of a striking process, as is the case for hearing officers with a civil service commission, and our board has strongly objected to that. We have, for reasons I won't bore you with, far more complicated cases as a matter of law than civil service commission and hearing officers have.
It was stated earlier that perhaps whatever the outcome, it wouldn't be retroactive, the legislation in Sacramento wouldn't be retroactive to this particular issue and case. If that's, if this is still in limbo, however, does that change anything? In other words, if this were to continue, either continue the matter or send it to a hearing officer, and it went on for another 30 or 45 days, legislation were to take effect, is this considered in limbo and affected by the legislation in Sacramento or not?
Just some information on SB 1881, there is no urgency clause on that, so it would not actually take effect until January 1.
We have plenty of time. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Fuentes.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer, for pointing out, when I said it would render all of this moot, prospectively would render sort of the process, we'd go back to the old process. But I've got a question in terms of sort of what happens between now and then. If AB 1881 gets signed by the governor, then we'll have a definitive process going forward after January 1. But my question is, meanwhile, the two at-question board members are rendering decisions, it seems to me. This meeting has taken place, and in between here, there's been meetings that the ERB has gotten together. What happens to those decisions? If they're being discounted and challenged by our labor partners, presumably they're still convening to hear issues before them, and there are two members at question, city attorney, what does that mean for the validity of those decisions? Are they at risk? The one that sort of percolates to the top of my head, the really exciting one, is the tier-two decision, where we're equally all sort of vested in sort of how that played out. What does it mean for that decision, say?
I do not know, and it's really not before this board to make that determination?
Well, not, what I'm saying is the decision's not so much the tier-two decision. So decisions that the ERB makes now with the two contested members are, does that invalidate all of the decisions that the ERB makes? Does it, if we find that we should dismiss the two board members, does that then sort of put into question all of the decisions that have been made, or does it only sort of change the vote count from their prior decisions? Is there any effect on that, and is that something that the hearing officer should be weighing in on?
I wouldn't think the hearing officer would be weighing on that. That's more of a question of charter interpretation than the unfair labor practice, especially this unfair labor practice.
Are we giving the charging party grounds to continue to challenge every decision that that ERB makes while we're weighing whether these two members should sit or should not sit on that ERB?
I'm sure the charging party will find any grounds they can.
Sure, from your perspective, are we vulnerable?
I, you know, I'm not a labor lawyer, and I believe the process that we're engaged in now should be played out, and then we could determine any consequences after that.
How often, I'm sorry, Mr. Bergerson, I just have one quick comment in that regard. Oh, excuse me, I'm not used to, I'm used to smaller rooms. I don't know the city's process, but your question gives me concern insofar as the president made some recess appointments, they're called, during the recess of Congress to the National Labor Relations Board, which the U.S. Supreme Court has deemed were unlawful, and the remedy for that is to invalidate all the decisions of the NLRB that those individuals were involved with. So that gives me great pause as to the Employee Relations Board.
So between now and January 1, which we don't know whether this law will be signed, I guess we'll have a sense in 30 days whether it's signed or not. But between now and January 1, there may be a universe of decisions that may or may not be sort of questioned in terms of sort of the validity. How often will the ERB meet between now and then? How much more work are we potentially creating here?
Well, we meet on a monthly basis regularly, and then the board, on occasion, has special meetings. I don't see anything necessarily that would necessitate that, although we've gotten some interesting unfairness filed by the CIO against the unions recently, actually. So it's an interesting time to be working for the ERB, actually.
Next meeting?
Possibly.
When is the next meeting?
Oh, when is the next meeting? September, it's the last Monday in September, I believe, the 25th, if somebody's got a calendar, I couldn't tell you the exact date. Oh, wait, excuse me, I do know, because the chairman is up for reappointment on September 23rd, and the meeting in September is the day before that, so it's September 22nd.
From the city perspective, I guess, there's a real, from a resource, cost, time sort of perspective, we may be wanting to root against 1881 now because we're going to create a batch of work that's incredibly unpredictable, especially since our CIO is filing unfair labor practices. This is just not a very good position to be in, members. I don't know what else to add, Mr. Chairman.
Let me ask a quick question, Mr. Bergerson. I think it was Mr. Englander asked. In fact, I just want a clarification. Let's say that this board votes to select a hearing officer to continue. Do we select, who actually selects that hearing officer?
Insofar as this board would act in lieu of the ERB, it would be you, sir.
So I would have to, I would be given a list?
Correct.
Okay, so, members, I'd like to just, I think we have a motion. I think we have--
The motion perhaps was not even necessary. My motion was simply to ask the city attorney to report back with further analysis of the conflict question, but I think that a single member can do that, so it's probably not even necessary to have a motion, and they'll do that within 10 days. But if you would like, Mr. President, I'd like to go ahead and move consistent with Mr. Fuentes and your comments earlier to refer this question to a hearing officer for further consideration and analysis of the factual and legal issues involved. I didn't catch whether we need to state with specificity the questions that are to be resolved by the hearing officer, or perhaps the scope of the claims themselves is sufficient to provide that-- is sufficient to provide that direction to the hearing officer. The claims seek a particular resolution based on particular factual statements. I think those questions should be resolved by the hearing officer and then reported back. But is it necessary to provide any greater specificity than that?
The board has gone both ways on that, depending upon, consistent with what you said, whether they think that the pleadings are sufficient to make it clear what the issue should be.
Okay. Well, for simplicity, I think it makes sense, then, to refer all of the matters that are stated in all of the claims and the city's response to those claims to the hearing officer for consideration and report back to this committee.
Okay. So, I'm going to look around, and without objection, I think that'll be the order.
Vote.
Okay. I'm told that I, there's no, I have to take public comment. There is no public comment. So, Madam Clerk, what is before, at this time, what is before this committee? Is this it?
That's it.
Then this committee's adjourned.
I think...
It's, we're adjourned, and the direction has already been given. So, see everyone in council.